All right, welcome everyone to the August 11th Town Hall. I'm Supervisor Manu Konig. This is a hybrid meeting, so as you can see, we've got folks both online zooming in as well as people here live at the Sheriff's Center. So I'm going to, here's our agenda for the evening. I'm going to talk through a number of specific projects and this, this meeting is really focused specifically on the Live Oak area. Been making an effort to rotate these meetings throughout the district. I think next, next month, we're scheduled for Santa Cruz Gardens. We know we've done one specifically focused on the coastal area, the Summit, Happy Valley, and SoCal as well. But this one is focused mostly on projects happening in the Live Oak area. So that's what the presentation I give will be about is, and you can see the numbers associated with various talking points here. I'm going to go through a few specific projects, Simpkins, Capitola Road, update on the proposed Kaiser facility nearby here, couple of transportation projects, Highway One, SoCal Drive, East Cliff Portola Drive, the rail trail, and then I'm actually going to talk the most tonight about the sustainability update to propose for our general plan and actually county code as well. It's the biggest proposed change in over 25 years. So, and it's coming to the board later this year, so worth getting everyone up to speed on. So I'll dive right in. We, I'm happy to say we've now completed the resurfacing of the pool at Simpkins as well as replacing the boiler. So if you haven't had a chance to get over there and check it out, next, not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday, the August 20th is Parks and Recs. It's going to be a fun event. You can even bring your dog to the pool. And was fun opportunity to check it out. You'll also notice if you go over there that we are well underway in construction for the Live Oak Library Annex. It's going to be some additional meeting rooms and programming space on front, in the front of Simpkins, which will effectively be a part of the Live Oak Library. We have made space for book lockers in there so that you'll be able to request a book through the online ordering system and have it show up in a locker there for you or drop books off. We're working also on some cool interactive features, a giant map of Live Oak with magnets and students will be able to create reports on different historical elements of Live Oak and then have a QR code and link to the report from there. We are also looking for a public art project for the larger patio area so that if you're familiar with Simpkins, that Live Oak tree out front right now is kind of in a roundabout. That whole area will be filled in with a public patio to provide for more meeting space. We're reviewing some art projects for it. We have one proposal by Leah DeWitt, I think I got her name right, but that does this glasswork. She did the butterflies at the Felton Library. I'm going to propose something with glass and metal that with maybe an ocean theme would do some public outreach to talk about exactly what theme to include. She proposed using more of a silvery metal to convey an ocean element. So that's one possibility. And another possibility would be doing something with the actual Live Oak that gives Live Oak its name. The tree that fell down from Live Oak Elementary, all that wood or majority of it has been saved. As you can see here in this picture from out behind one of the school properties and I could look at doing an art piece with that. Driven around Live Oak, I'm sure you've also noticed all the construction happening at 1500 Capitola Road. This is a reminder of what the finished product will look like with two health clinics up front. So the Santa Cruz Community Health Clinic here on the left and then on the right, the Dientes Clinic. And in the back, 57 units of affordable housing. So the clinics, as you probably have noticed, started first and are still on track to be finished this fall and open sometime around October, November. And progress is well underway. The housing, we broke ground in May and it's expected to take about a year or so. Should open doors next May, 2023. Most of, more than half of it will be two and three bedrooms. It's really a family-focused project. You can maybe just make out a play structure in the middle of sort of a courtyard area for the housing. And the majority of units will be live work preference for people who are already in the County of Santa Cruz with 14 units specifically, live work preference for folks in Live Oak. In this front corner here, there was talk of trying to include a pharmacy so that people could fill their prescriptions right there. That is, looks like it might not work out, but we're looking for a permanent home or a physical home for cradle to career, which should be another great use to activate the space. This is just some of the progress coming along there in the Dientes Clinic. You can see some cool murals going in. And again, the timeline that I mentioned. All right, so the proposed Kaiser facility, 5940 SoCal Avenue, really pretty much right next door to us here at the Sheriff's Center. Originally, we thought this was going to evolve a little bit faster and that we would have hearings about it in the spring. It really has been pushed back to this fall. Nothing has really happened in the last six, six months or more. Largely because we're trying to make sure that above all, we have a balanced healthcare system in the county. And some of you may have heard that Watsonville Hospital declared bankruptcy. That factors into this because Watsonville Hospital would be the ER that Kaiser would send patients to. Because they don't have an agreement with dignity and so you couldn't go there to Dominican's ER if you're a Kaiser patient. So we've really been working to turn around Watsonville Hospital. The, all the money is due to actually purchase it and take it public. Money is due really August 15th. We think we're all the way there. Expect that to close at the end of August. And then conversations would move forward with the proposed Kaiser facility over here in Live Oak. It would primarily be a building for specialty care. And so we're also been working on an access to care agreement to make sure that many of the folks on Medi-Cal and Medicare would also have access to some of those specialists which are hard to come by. So don't have any more specifics for you now, I'm afraid, but just know that that is likely to come up soon this fall. For starting with the Planning Commission hearing and then coming to the board. And I will also have more updates for you soon as far as, you know, what kind of proposed transportation improvements would be involved with, mitigating any impact from that project. All right, the Highway Auxiliary Lane and Bus on Shoulder project is also still slated to start later this year. So it would start from SoCal Drive here, go to 41st. You want to add an auxiliary lane, much like we've already seen between the Fish Hook and Morrissey. So that kind of extra entry exit lane. And it could also be used by the bus continuing under the exits. That's what we're calling also a bus on shoulder project. We've gone out to bid for it and are scheduled to begin that project later this year. And that also includes the construction of the Shanticleer Bike and Pedestrian Bridge, which you can see here would go over and be a good alternative to using the SoCal Drive overpass. If you're a bike or pedestrian, should increase access for folks in the Winkle Park, Thurber neighborhood to the beach. The SoCal Drive Buffer Bike Lane and Congestion Mitigation Project. This is really a multimodal project that'll improve 22 signals along SoCal Drive. Make it so they're all wired together with fiber and actually timed correctly. So that'll improve the flow of traffic. If you're in a car, there'll also be some integration with our bus system. So the lights will know if there's a Metro Bus waiting, will be able to change, turn green faster. Or you know, just help improve flow around the bus. There'll also be, the whole project is about five miles long. So if you count going both ways, 10 miles of new protected or buffered bike lanes. So the protected is when there's a post like that and buffered is if there's just some striping, a little extra striping between. So it should be a much better environment to walk a bike. And then there's also a 94 ADA ramp upgrades just to make the entire area a lot more walkable. That was supposed to start this fall, but is probably now looking more like early next year, 2023. Then some updates for you on Portola Drive. If you've driven through there, you've seen we recently resurfaced it. And been, we had some complaints about the quality of the job and got the contractor to go back and agreed to grind out a few of the spots and also put another layer of slurry over the bike lanes. So those corrections are now scheduled for the 23rd of this month, so this coming week, the week after. And then the striping will go down also that week, Thursday, the 25th and 26th of August. East Cliff between 12th Avenue and ultimately all the way to 26th is also going to start construction sometime after Labor Day. We don't have a specific date for you yet, but basically this is actually a project that initiated with the sanitation district. So the folks that handle our sewer system, you guys may remember there was a pipe replacement in the street last, maybe it was almost two years ago now. But that was an emergency repair and so we're trying to get ahead of it and they're going to be replacing this whole section of sewer pipe. And it's going to take a year. It's going to be quite a bit of construction, but the good news is it'll also lead to a complete resurfacing of the street. Which as you, if you've driven over it, you know badly needs, it's down in the 30 out of 100 on the pavement condition index. So good news is when it's all done, we'll basically have a completely updated Portola East Cliff stretch here in the Incorporated County. All right, rail trail segments 10 and 11 update. So we have now applied for funding from the state for these next segments to the, it's the active transportation program funding. There is $1.65 billion available from the state for active transportation projects statewide. And we've applied for 102 million of that with our rail trail project between the Boardwalk and 17th Avenue. So we'll see how the, how those applications do. They work very, the segments eight and nine were very competitive in the last cycle. They ultimately didn't get funded. And the outcome of those grant applications will give us a lot more information about how best to move forward. The RTC, Regional Transportation Commission, did also approve putting out a request for proposals for a contractor that could prepare an environmental impact report on passenger rail. So that environmental impact report would look at potential station locations, frequency of service, estimated cost of any right-of-way acquisition and engineering work that would be needed. The cost is about 70 to 20 million dollars total expected. We'll see what, what kind of bids we actually get. And we've built into that. And so about 20% of that would have to come from local money. It's about $4 million, pretty much from our existing sales tax revenue from Measure D. It's a half cent sales tax that we've all been paying. And the goal would be to do a sort of overview of the project first, answering some of these high-level questions before getting into the nitty-gritty and engineering and try to get the state to pay for more of that later on. Regardless, probably wouldn't expect to see beginning construction of any of these rail trail segments until early 2025. All right, now I'm going to get into housing. You may have heard some of the, we have now the grim honor of being the second most expensive housing market in the country. Recent report says we're the, the taste on average $60.35 to afford the average rental in Santa Cruz County, two-bedroom rental now is about $3,138 a month. And rents have increased 70% over the last five years. Meanwhile, of course, home prices are average for 95062 is one point, basically $1.5 million. Putting homeownership out of reach for most middle-income folks. So the challenge here is really that it's impossible to hire and just about across the board. County has over 80 open healthcare positions. In fact, we, we just allocated budget for another five positions in our planning department to try and speed up processing of applications. But we're concerned about being able to hire the planners necessary to approve the housing that'll help us get out of this crisis. We're also seeing just less students and families overall. Korea's seen a 40% reduction in students since 2008. And it's really something that, if not exactly that number, we're still seeing reductions across all our school districts. We're also struggling with being able to hire teachers. And one of the big differences between Santa Cruz and say the East Coast is if you live on the East Coast to retire, you move to Florida. You live in Santa Cruz and you retire, you stay in Santa Cruz. It's an amazing place to live. So as teachers retire, we're not freeing up more housing stock and the next generation of teachers can't afford to move here. So that's why it matters. We're also seeing more and more people, you know, have to drive in to do a variety of jobs in the area. And so that just adds to more traffic and cars on the road if people can't live where they work. So the goal is to try to build more housing so that people can live closer to where they work and to address this problem. And I mean, not only is it something that, of course, many of us want to do, but it's also something that the state is requiring us to do, at least to plan for. And so there's something called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment or RENA. And it is a state law where they basically assign us a number of units that we have to then put on into our zoning map. And then of course, they get permitted and constructed after that. So in, it's an eight-year cycle between 2014, 2023, we were allocated 1,314 units. We've built, we've built about 645 of those or, you know, basically close to 50% now. We're not responsible for building them, of course. That's the private sector. But it's just kind of gives you some sense of difficulties of building here. In the next cycle, this got cut off, but our allocation is three and a half times that. So it's 4,634 units. So that exact allocation will be finalized. It has been finalized and then we'll basically have to integrate it into our zoning map next year in what's called the housing element. So we're undertaking what we're calling the sustainability update in order to try to provide the tools that actually fit these units onto our zoning map. So it's a collection of general plan amendments and amendments to the county code as well as creating a set of county design guidelines that will basically set the pattern of development for our community for the next at least eight years, this RENA cycle and into the future. There's a couple of specific rezonings involved at Thurber Lane on SoCal, and SoCal Drive and on Portola Drive. I'll show you in a second. And also, right now, the maximum density in the county is base units of about 17 units per acre. And so this would increase the maximum density for what's called, you know, residential urban high density to between 11 and 30 units and create a new zoning district called Residential Urban Flex, which would be 22 to 45 units per acre. And then you can see here the specific properties that are proposed for rezoning within the sustainability update. One over here on Thurber and SoCal Drive. It's where the Christmas tree lot and pumpkins are sold there by Wells Fargo. And then a few lots here along Portola Drive south of the Town and Country Center there. Most of these are, you know, storage or auto yards today, so not, not really as integrated into the, not providing housing or commercial this time. And so the goal would be to try to create some more housing there. So I thought, you know, in thinking about, you know, some of these changes, it might be useful to look at exactly how many units per acre, what unit, a certain number of units per acre looks like. So your standard, single-family neighborhood, this is, looks like this, four dwelling units per acre. But this is also with the driveways and, and garages specifically planned into how these homes are laid out. When you go to the style without the driveways and with actually a back alleyway access point for cars, like you see a lot in Pleasure Point. That's actually about 5.3 dwelling units per acre. This is a sense of kind of the maximum density we allow today, 18 dwelling units per acre. As I said, it was 17 today. So maybe a little taller than we've seen in some, most parts of the county. But they've also have extensive, you know, tennis court in there. And, you know, other extensive green areas and parking so that the areas where our buildings have to be a little bit taller. So it really makes a big difference actually how you plan out the rest of the property that, you know, how big the buildings are. You can see 27 units per acre, but they've got tuck under parking. And of course, you know, no park area or anything else. And so doesn't look like a much bigger building, but actually it does have a lot more units there. This surprisingly enough is 44 units per acre, again with parking underground. So that, and you know, just this kind of courtyard community space. And so we're able to get a lot of units on there because of those two features. This is 59 dwelling units per acre, not being proposed in the sustainability update. But interestingly here, you know, you can see how that, this is actually just one corner of the property is this four stories. The other side is townhomes and there's a good amount of parking inside here. So a lot of the units here have been clustered on one side of the property. And so it actually looks a lot bigger. And this is 162 units per acre. It's just, you know, this is in downtown Seattle, so. But you know, you can see that you might not originally see like all that different, much difference in terms of the size of these two properties. And really it is in terms of the other land usage besides the housing units, whether there's parking provided like this or other maybe single or double story buildings somewhere. So because of that, I mean, taking into account what a big impact design guidelines have, those are a part of the proposed sustainability update. So moving a lot of the car access to the interior part of lots, again, to make the, both to maximize space, but also to make it streetscape-friendlier. Also breaking up the massive buildings so that it's not one sheer wall facing, facing a sidewalk or the street. That also helps buildings feel a little bit more approachable, requiring a setback on the third story or an additional five feet setback on upper stories like that. There's a couple more examples as well. So that's the goal with the design guidelines is to make sure that, I mean, as, as you saw with those different examples, really makes a big difference in how much in the way the building is laid out, so. All right, next steps for the sustainability update. I was kind of have, been having a lot of just informational meetings since about April. We'll now be getting to the first official Planning Commission hearing at the end of this month, August 24th. And then the Planning Commission will have another hearing scheduled for September 14th. And expected to, it's expected to come to the Board of Supervisors in October to December for final review. And then the last thing I'll mention before opening it for questions and comments is also there's a Load Street Master Plan planning underway. This is the sanitation district over near 26th Avenue and August 17th, 6:00 PM. At the facility is your next opportunity for public feedback on that. It's for session of the information gathering and then this meeting in September to provide initial concepts and October to share the draft master plan. That's all I got for you in terms of presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions on anything I shared or anything I didn't talk about. And if you are here in the live, we'll take questions from the live audience first and then go online. And just ask you, speaking of the mic, you're not going to hear it like a normal mic, let your voice super loud, but it does allow the online audience to hear you. So yeah, please take it away.
Regarding the Kaiser hospital going in there. I've heard that there's one going downtown as well. And I don't know if that's true, but is the zoning, has the zoning been changed already for the Kaiser facility?
No, it has not.
Okay. Regarding the design guidelines and housing, I just want to reiterate for me that Kaiser doesn't belong there. There's no infrastructure and I vote no on that.
Thanks. On the design guidelines for the housing, could you say something about what the goals were for the design guidelines?
Sure. So the, the first goal is to provide clear expectations to builders so that they can move faster through their design process and ultimately in terms of submitting an application of the county that we're going to like and be able to approve. So that's one step is streamlining the process. The other is to ensure that what does get built has a consistent community look and feel and is something that, you know, the majority of people can get behind and feel good about. As I was trying to demonstrate with the different images of, you know, you can have, you can have a project that actually has less housing, but feel more sort of intimidating or larger. Maybe it actually just would have larger buildings if you don't have those kinds of design guidelines followed. So where you put the parking makes a big difference or how the building is oriented towards the street. And so the design guidelines are there to try to make the buildings as approachable as possible.
Right. So I understand the purpose of guidelines, but what I was thinking of is, is, is there something that says a certain amount of green space or after a certain number of units, the parking will go underground? Is there, and when you say something we all like, well.
Of course.
So usually, usually there's a, there's some kind of, I would imagine, something that says, this is what we like. This is what, what we're looking for in terms of green space or parking or amenities. And I was wondering if the guidelines speak to that.
Yeah, there are some parts of the guidelines calling out, you know, expansion of urban forest landscaping and trees will be required in front of the development. There are other requirements around providing some kind of community space after a certain number of units. So yeah, those are definitely factors in the grid design guidelines.
Great, thanks. And then I had one other question. What is Load Street?
Yeah, it's basic, so we have our sewer treatment plant in the county. Really the one that does all the work is down at Neri Lagoon in the city of Santa Cruz. But we, in order to get all of our sewage there, it has to go to Load Street over on 26th, which is basically everything flows by gravity to Load Street and then is force pumped to Neri Lagoon in the city. So it's kind of the major collection spot for all our sewage. And it's also nicely integrated into Morin Lake County Park. And so the goal with the master plan is to make sure, so that it continues to be a good neighbor. So that's the point of the master plan.
So when the state mandates that we must build X number of units, we have any recourse to re?
Just hold it a little closer to your mouth.
To build all these units. I mean, even if we cram them on the lots and make them up and bigger and this parking here or there. We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the water. I don't know how we're going to produce that.
Yeah, great question.
We can't go to the state and say this is not doable. Why do we have to accept this from the state?
Yeah, so it is a state law that was made by our state legislators and some communities have, you know, appealed or sued saying we don't want to follow this law. And basically they were defeated and said, sorry, you have to. Now, there's conflicts within the state agencies too. So for example, down in Monterey, they were trying to build a housing project. I think it was 160 units or something. And as you, the state water board came in and said, sorry, you don't have enough water. So the city was trying to build the units in accordance with the housing goals. And the water board came in and said, and kind of put the kibosh. And the water board came in and said, and kind of put the kibosh on the project. So I think really to understand, I think to understand with the Rena process, the housing needs process is that it has to be possible, theoretically possible to add these units on our zoning map. Now, as you saw, our goals used to be for this last cycle, one third that, that the number of units we've produced, you know, half of it. So we have essentially a sixth of the new goals. The, the fundamental environment around the cost of development and the other challenges are not going to change all overnight, right? So whether or not we actually build all those units is a different story, but it has to just simply be possible on the zoning map. And there's not a lot that we can do to change that. I mean, other than talking to our state legislators, Mark Stone and John Laird to try to get them to change the, change the law. But I think this cycle, the sixth cycle arena is pretty much in progress and it's hard to reverse. Could just hold that mic closer to you.
Is there a place where we can report illegal dumping as in some people who have camped and left large amounts of debris?
Yes, absolutely. There's the, you're always welcome to reach out to my office and we can handle it. There's also the My Santa Cruz County app. You can either just search for My Santa Cruz County online and there's a webpage that will do it. There's also an app you can download on your phone. The advantage of doing it that way is that it literally goes straight to the crew that's out on the roads right now. And I've even been, you know, it, it's faster for me sometimes to report issues through the app than talk to the head of the department because the guy out there right now is going around and gets a ticket and can go address the, the issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This really wasn't on your agenda, but we lived in joining property to sections eight and nine of the rail trail. And we had met with Rob Tidmore, the county. I don't exactly know what his title is, but about the preliminary engineering plans for the area. And it seems to us there's a whole lot of trees going to be gut down in order to build this trail. And I think a lot of people don't realize. I also realized the financial cost and environmental cost. And I don't know, is the, maybe you know, if coastal commission has approved this project, I know what the E I R hasn't been filed yet.
Right. The E I R is still in progress for these segments and it's looking at it's looking at two options, right? The interim trail where we'd be building over the space where the railroad tracks are now. That would require rail banking and removing the tracks. And which has not been a popular idea as demonstrated by the failure of measure D in the last, in, in June. But then the alternative is to try to build the trail next to the tracks, which as you pointed out, does require the removal of a lot of trees. So the environmental impact report is not complete, expected to complete it spring of next year. And then a decision would be made on it. Then we have really treated the sort of interim option, ultimate option is the same project. So we're clearing them with the same environmental document. We've included language, even in terms of our grant application to the state to provide flexibility to do either. And I mentioned that because, you know, we'll see if, if the state gives us all the, we applied for how much we'd need to build the ultimate trail, which is twice as expensive. If we get all the money, you know, then at least it's possible. If we don't, maybe that option, you know, is not even financially feasible. We'll sort of have a lot more information in the, in the next eight months or so. We expect to hear back from the state in October in terms of our application.
And then the coastal commission is.
They haven't weighed in on that part of the project yet. You know, they have some issues, particularly with the man research cliffs in, in front of La Selva. And where the railroad tracks are there.
And the trees are protected.
That's true. I, I haven't talked to them about heritage trees in the, in the coastal zone yet, but that's a, it's a good point.
Is, is there ever any plans of presenting to the public, to the people of Santa Cruz County, exactly how much these plans are going to cost the rail in particular? They've done numerous studies and the cost estimates are very high. And as will the subsidies required to get riders to use the train. And I think that the people of Santa Cruz County were presented with the actual costs financially and environmentally, they might not be so pro train, pro real.
Yep. Some of, some of those figures already exist. And the environmental impact report that I mentioned for passenger rail would give us updated figures, including looking at some things that haven't been considered before, such as the cost of acquiring some new right of way in areas. So as I said, the goal with that would be to try to get some of those figures necessary to making decision upfront. In a, in a preliminary overview, so that we are, have as much information as possible to make a good decision as soon as possible.
I was concerned because I just saw today that they had put out for bid preliminary engineering for contracts for electric rail for the system. They're just going ahead and.
It's for that environmental impact report. Basically put out a request for proposals, asking consultants to, to apply and say how much they think it would cost, you know, their proposal for how much it would cost to, to do that report. But it, it doesn't mean that we've approved passenger rail. All right, great. Well, now we'll go to the online audience. Jamie, if you want to.
Absolutely. Thank you supervisor. The first question we have comes from Joe Hall. Joe, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mine is a much less global question. I was happy to see East Cliff Drive will eventually get repaved because you mentioned it's thirty and who knows if it's twenty five or whatever. But when the project was actually designed, there were what I call rumble strips, but there were these concrete paper stones put in the street. And the theory back then, and this is thirty years ago or so, was that would slow down the traffic. Unfortunately, the only thing so far that's actually slowed down the traffic were the flashing lights that were put in this year. And that's been a great improvement. I'm wondering if you could put on your list when you're talking about repaving, if you might take out those concrete blocks, they're all chewed up. They make a lot of noise and they really don't slow down anything. It was a great idea. It was interesting to watch, but I'm sure the people who live next to it would love to not have that noise day in and day out. So anyhow, I was just putting in a little pitch to maybe when you do it, pull out those stones. Half of them are gone now. And not half of them, but a good number have been destroyed over time. So anyhow, that was really all it was. I look forward to in a couple of years to have the street repaved. That'll be fun to watch and then we get our planner strips and everything else kind of up to shape. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I'll discuss the options there with public works. Thanks, Joe.
Our next question is from Gina Michael.
Hi, Manu. The, it's interesting that somebody mentioned the, the rail corridor because we slipped over real fast to try and talk to the folks at Sorrento Oaks Mobile Home Park, but turns out that meeting was two days ago. But that's okay, because Miguel's a friend and we've arranged to talk with him again. But it was interesting to see his home is right along the corridor. And the county is now talking about easements and taking down the, the chain link fence, which is about two feet away from his home where he lives. And so as you know, I've been concerned about Castle Mobile Estates and the blue and gold mobile home parks. But, and I didn't think that Sorrento Oaks was going to have difficulty, but they, the county wants an easement for this fancy viaduct over Leona Creek. And there's going to be some, some difficulties with that. I can tell you the number of trees that are coming down with the ultimate trail between seventh and seventeen avenue. That's four hundred and twenty six trees. Yeah. And that's just for one and three quarters mile. So let's look at the next twenty, that many in a one and three quarters mile and then look at farther east, all the way for another twenty miles. So it'll be substantial. If you'll give me another thirty to forty five seconds, I, I did have one concern about residential development in the urban in the urban residential area. And I am really anxious for the tiny homes projects to be successful. You know that very, very anxious. We both are. Our main concern is that in where tiny homes are installed in existing residential homes with public sidewalks in front of them. We already have difficulty as we walk through the county with cars parking. They park in their driveway because their garages are full and they cover the sidewalk. Sometimes they cover half the sidewalk, which isn't good for somebody in a wheelchair. Sometimes they cover the entire sidewalk. We have to walk around in the street. I looked at the tiny homes specifications for your board meeting. And I realized that that was not the place to talk about where people would have to park their cars. But I just want to wave that flag again. It's an unintended consequence of greater density in existing residential properties if we want people to be able to use the sidewalk. So thanks, thanks for hearing that concern.
Yeah, thank you. And I know the planning commission just reviewed the tiny homes ordinance. So I'll take a closer look at it as it comes to the board and with that consideration and making sure. Yeah, we're not blocking sidewalks or we're putting excessive strain on, on parking for the rest of the neighborhood.
Our next question is from Dina.
Oh, hi. I had a question about the fifteen hundred Capitola Road project. And the Live Oak Senior Center used to be located on that property and they were forced to vacate because of the, because of the new plans. And I wondered if you have any idea of where it will be located now?
Also, I think you're mixing up fifteen hundred Capitola Road and seventeen hundred seventy seven Capitola Road across from the elementary school. The bit, I mean, the, the senior center building is still there, right? That you're thinking of?
Okay.
Yeah.
There hasn't talked about having to, having to go though.
There has been discussion. So that's owned by the Live Oak School District. And they're concerned about the, the status of the building and just, and that it could start leaking this winter. And they don't have the funds to repair it. And their ultimate plans are to tear that building down and build some new project that incorporates teacher housing. And so I actually was just reaching out to the school district to see where they're at with this. The current tenants, including the senior center, have proposed taking on that liability for those repairs, which should address the school district's concerns about not having enough money to do the repairs and not wanting to take that money away from student focused activities. So hopefully they're able to find some agreement on that, that, you know, senior center takes on the responsibility for repairs to the building that they can stay for a bit longer, because I don't think that any kind of teacher housing project is, it's not imminent. And we also have offered to help with the county in terms of doing some pre-design work. We, we did a lot of work on fifteen hundred Capitola Road, the, the clinic and housing project to bring those different partners together. Gentes and Santa Cruz Community Health and Mid Penn Housing to be, to create a viable project there. And so we're offering to do the same thing at where the senior center is now in order to try to get a project that would ultimately serve both students and seniors. And of course, there would need to, at a minimum, be some kind of temporary relocation of the senior center while a project happens. But that's what I'm trying to bring to the situation to help solve it. But things are still in flux right now. I think the school district is reviewing the proposal from the senior center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Patty, you're next.
Hi, I want to thank you both for having this meeting. And I'd like to reiterate that the forty six hundred units is countywide, which means among five districts, that's approximately maybe close to nine hundred each. And the, there's, as you know, major concern and pleasure point about the density issue of forty five units per one acre. And we would very much appreciate that being acknowledged that there is serious resident concern about infrastructure impacts and issues on Portola, which create additional safety hazards. So while we march along, I think it's really important that the resident opposition to this issue be acknowledged. Also, there's a lot of concern about weeds. When will the dry weeds be cut? There was a fire today supposedly at forty first avenue and Claire Street. Everybody's concerned about fire and the weeds just seem to be getting higher. And we do pay a tax on our property bill for beautification for Live Oak. And where is that money being spent?
All right. If that's, if you're done, Patty. Yes.
I am done. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to acknowledge the feedback we've got. I've, I've heard loud and clear from the pleasure point community that the, the, the max zoning there forty five units per acre is too much, especially considering on the potential that it could increase if, if a developer applied the affordability density bonus. And I, you know, happy to continue working with you and the rest of the pleasure point community to come to a proposal that is acceptable for the neighborhood. You know, it's easy to multiply the forty five units base per acre by, you know, as much as you can possible increased density as you can get with affordability, et cetera. I think you'd come out with eighty six units per acre. But you know, the reality is there are other factors that can constrain development besides just the units breaker. So whether it's, you know, height restriction or parking requirements or other things that just add or floor area ratios. There's actually a number of tools there. So it's, you know, it's not just a matter of the units per acre. But again, acknowledge the opposition to that and looking forward to meeting next week to talk more about it. As far as the weeds, yes. Certainly no, it's a problem. Been telling public works to get out there and mow them now for the last couple of weeks. They are saying that we use those funds to apply them to grinding down imperfections or ruptures in the sidewalk. And after hearing all of the community concern, they're looking at reapplying those funds back to beautification. So should know more about that soon and we'll be in communication with you as it evolves.
Thank you.
Yeah. And at a minimum, we'll get out there and it may, of course, ensure that this, all the storm drains are clear from debris. You know, we don't see greater impacts to the infrastructure.
Supervisor, I have another question from Miguel. Miguel, if you're ready, you can unmute.
Okay, I am unmuted. I would initially, sorry for the delay. I was, I got a message that I was, the host was not allowing me to unmute, but I think I'm good now. So despite the title under my screen, I'm borrowing the screen with Joanna Jarvis. I'm Miguel Aznar from Sorrento Oaks. I have two questions. The more global one is what, can you connect us, Manu, with other homes and parks that are facing the same issues with rail, rail trail uneasement? I mentioned that a lot of parks in particular are going to be facing similar issues, figuring out what our options are, what sort of separation there can be, what the legalities are. And we don't have, at Sorrento Oaks, we don't have a lot of money to hire lawyers. So if we could share that effort with other parks, we'd like to find out how best to work with the. we'd like to find out how best to work with the county and RTC. The second question was brought up because I spoke to Jean earlier. She saw the three-foot easement that I have between my home and the property line with the rails and indicated her belief was that my house would be impacted, though the wording was more colorful. We have another house in, in Sorrento Oaks, also three feet apart. When Rob Tidmore from the county came by, he said, oh, it's not a problem. Your houses won't be impacted. There does need to be drainage put in. But he said the drainage could go underground. So I guess the question in short is, will we have to move homes or cut off the ends of homes in order for the rail trail to put in drainage on our property?
I don't know the, the answer to that off the top of my head, as far as where the drainage is going to go. But I'm certainly happy to come out and look at the situation that you're facing there and the easement. And also, you know, as Jean mentioned, there's a number of other parks dealing with this, particularly Blue and Gold and Castle over on Thirty-eighth Avenue. It's pretty tight over there. So yes, happy to connect you with them as well.
Thank you. And is Jean a good contact person for us to meet with other groups, other parks?
She is because she is our mobile manufactured home commissioner for the first district, which does have the most, I think we're eighty percent of all the mobile manufactured homes in the county. So yes, Jean is an excellent contact.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have two more hands up, supervisor, if you'd like to continue.
Yes, please.
Sean, you're next.
Sean, are you there?
And Sean, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. There we go. Part of the information that you shared about rail trailers, that there's not, that there's only just now money available. We've been hearing about it from this administration since last year. You've been telling us from the RTC for a long time that there's no money. And are we expected to believe that just, just since, since the time that Measure D put forward by, in part by the organization that you were an executive director of, that sued the RTC and drained a bunch of money out of it to protect themselves legally? Are we supposed to believe that just since Measure D, that there's money available? Because there's been nothing controversial about a rail and trail that has been successful. Every time there's been a vote on it, there's nothing. You know, there's nothing strange about that. It's the will of the people. And it's only been organizations like the one that you were an executive director of that has made it difficult, has wasted this time, like people are asking about the overgrown corridor. You know, it's ivy and eucalyptus and other invasive fire-prone vegetation that's, you know, not going to save our, our climate. It's not going to help anymore than, you know, a train's going to do a lot more. But isn't that the RTC's responsibility to make sure that gets cleared and that's been put aside? Well, they have to fight with Greenway and Trail Now and Measure D that failed miserably.
All right, Sean, well, I'll try to unpack your question there. Main one seems to be about whether or not there is money. So let's be clear, the money that we're talking about that is available for a passenger rail EIR comes from the two thousand sixteen Measure D, that's the half-cent sales tax. And it allocated eight percent of that sales tax to rail-related projects, maintenance and study. So it's about forty million dollars total. We have been steadily spending those funds to maintain the rail corridor. You know, there's basically a lot of water that flows across the corridor. It was put up. And so we're, you know, there's an over ninety culverts, for example, that we're often maintaining or dealing with the eroding cliffs and man recess. So we have been spending that money. And there was concern really by at least half of the commission on whether the viability of rail in the future. And that's why, you know, last year, we chose not to move forward with the passenger rail EIR at the time. After the results of Measure D, it's clear that we at least need more information on the viability of passenger rail. And so that's why we just voted to put the RFP out. Now, let's be clear, forty million dollars is really not all that much when you're talking about a major transportation project. And in, in order to spend the money on doing the study, we're actually going to have to pull funds off of maintenance for the corridor. So we're going to see more, more weeds. I think we can at least manage to weed bill, actually. But we're going to see more water damage probably to places along the rail corridor. Because if we're spending, you know, four million dollars, which is kind of the next few years of available tax revenue for rail on the study, it's not going to be going to maintenance. What there isn't money for either, at this time identified, is to actually build the system. Last estimates were at least five hundred million dollars to build passenger rail. And that's not counting the subsidy it would take to operate it. That would require, the RTC has estimated at least another half-cent sales tax to go before the voters. And hey, those haven't been terribly popular either, as we saw with the failure of the city's half-cent sales tax. So whether or not that is, is possible will also be proven out here. But at the least, we're all moving forward in terms of getting more information about the feasibility.
Our next question is from Marina.
All right. Oh, hi there. My first time here. I have a very brief question. I want to ask, Manu, I read on the website that it has office hours the first Wednesday of every month. And I wanted to ask if I need an appointment or if I can just show up. And then another question, if behold's any other office hours before then anywhere else. Thank you.
Hi Marina. No, you don't have to make an appointment. Yes, you can just show up. Usually we haven't had any issues with being able to get through everyone. Usually you might have to wait fifteen minutes, but everyone that shows up. And we're here at the Live Oak Sheriff's Center. And yeah, so the next time will be the first Wednesday in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. We're just seeing you. All right, any further questions, either in person? If you could just wait one second for it to switch to the mic.
So this is a very detailed, kind of narrow question. But we got to go with the organic cans. There was an offer that you could request the pail. Residents could request a compost pail for their kitchens. But when you call, you can only do that if you're a single house dwelling. So my, my understanding was is that the offer of the pails was to encourage people to use the green cans, which we really want people to do. And but if you live in an HOA, if you live in a condominium, you can't get those. And I'm just wondering if there's any way to encourage green waste to change their policy and allow people who live in condominiums to get that.
Sure. So just a little clarification, that the rules are a little bit different if you're a city of Santa Cruz resident versus county of Santa Cruz. And that's because we just have different waste haulers. So if you live in the city, they're doing those individual pails for homes. If you live in the county, we're not doing that. And you can just go ahead and put your compost in the green, green bin.
Right, okay, so it's.
Including it, including for multifamily.
I see. Okay, okay. Well, I wonder why the county didn't do that. Yeah, I mean, you know, for people who haven't done this before and it's all strange and everything, it's one of those things that just encourages them to do it.
I, I don't know if we did an analysis on it. We just also have more residents, so it'd be somewhat significant expense. But we're also, I think, a little bit more inclusive in terms of the amount of stuff that are waste holler, green waste will actually allow you to put into the compost. Because it's actually being used a little bit differently. I think the cities is being used for the animal feed ultimately. Whereas in the county, it's whatever more traditional compost for your garden.
So I'll tell my friends that we're not being in some way discriminated against because we live in a condo.
No, no.
Okay. And then I have, I'm sorry, this is a very broad question. It's more of an educational issue. So we get, so the, we had the bipartisan bill that was passed, that infrastructure bill that was passed last year. And part of that was broadband Wi-Fi support. And I'm just wondering, how long does it take for that kind of bill and funds to come down to the county level? And, and, and of course, the same thing happening with the bill that's getting passed this week with the climate the climate support bill.
It varies. I would say probably roughly speaking, somewhere between six months and twelve months. Now, what we've done as far as the broadband goes is we did spend some of our American Rescue Plan funding. So from COVID, we had a certain amount that was left over after all, everything the county did for health and shelters. And we spent half a million of it on broadband. And so that was a contract that went to Cruz IO. They're putting up a few different wireless hotspots throughout Live Oak, working with the school district. We also funded a broadband master plan so that when that federal and state money comes into the county, we're basically ready to deploy it to the most effective possible spot. So we approved work on the broadband master plan a couple of months ago. And so we should, I don't know when we're expecting a draft exactly, but we'll have that. And then when the federal and state funding comes in, I'll be ready to deploy it.
Do you happen to know what the square footage is of some of this low-cost housing that's being considered?
You mean like just in general?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I know some of them are probably going to be family and some of them are going to be single. There's a lot of single, you know, senior teachers, et cetera. But I'm just curious because I see a lot of mondo building going on. And it seems like more housing would fit if there were, you know, tiny houses everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good question. I mean, sort of, and you may be aware, the city, in, in the city, Swenson proposed the Calypso project, which is almost entirely studios, right? And so there is a move certainly towards affordable by design units that are just a little bit smaller and more likely to appeal to someone for, you know, starter home or apartment rather than, you know, a second home. And it's that, because of that, there is an argument that we should actually just get rid of, you know, the units per acre requirement at all and just go to form-based zoning. Say, you know, it can be three, it can only be three stories tall and you have to provide this much parking. And otherwise, put as many units as you want in there. You don't care if they're two hundred square feet or a thousand or two thousand. So anyway, yeah, you've kind of hit on an evolving discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I, there seems to be a lot of single people in Santa Cruz. And they, you know, whether they're from the university or working at the university or the hospitals or the schools, and they all need housing. So, you know, they don't need big houses.
Certainly. Yeah. And then, and then on the flip side, you know, we're seeing some more, you know, assisted living and senior care facilities coming in too, to provide people on the other end of the spectrum who also don't need as much space.
Yeah.
I think we had one more question here, or a couple of questions in the live audience.
Hey, so I'm a Live Oak resident. I live in the vicinity of Seventh Avenue in Bromer. And I have two questions. One is, has there been some research done about impact when the bridges closed? What that's going to look like for that area? Because currently, from, I don't even, I haven't even asked the sheriffs, but I know for a fact in the last two years, we've had five trees hit. We've had three houses run into on Seventh Avenue with the speed of folks driving. And so I'm just curious what that looks like when the bridge is closed and what are the alternate routes people are going to be taking? And then have there been any, have there been any discussions around how we can slow, slow down traffic, well, slow down cars in general on Seventh Avenue in Bromer? I've been passed twice in the last two months because I was going the speed limit and the people felt as though I was not going fast enough. And I've talked to other folks in that area, and it's happening to them. And the noise that it creates when people are flying down the road and using Seventh Avenue as a drag racing is just getting crazy. I mean, I've lived there seventeen years, so I'd like to know what you guys have, if it's on your radar. If you're hearing from residents, and if you're not, I'll make sure you will be, and what we can be doing about that, because it's getting really bad. It's unsafe. And I know safety is a big thing for all of us.
So your first question about when the bridges close, I assume you're talking about the Harbor Bridge, when the city undertakes construction there. At this point, all I know is that they've postponed their start date on that. I wish they were looking at this fall, early next year. And that's been pushed out. I don't have a new date at this point. Okay, so anyway, it's, I mean, they've been talking about it for a decade now, so not terribly surprising. It's pushed out further. Last I heard, they were planning on making it primarily westbound travel.
It looks like we've just lost Supervisor Koenig. Give us a minute and we'll get him back going again.
Sorry, folks online, my, my computer died. So yeah, so they've promised to provide a website with up-to-date information when the project does go live and synchronize their work between city and county to make sure we have as little impact as possible. As far as your question about speeding on Seventh Avenue, I hear how fast the cars go myself as well. It's definitely not a very pleasant environment to walk because cars are going so fast. But I haven't heard from yourself or other residents about wanting to do something about it yet. You know, really, the kind of, it'd be a hard street to put speed bumps on because it is fairly well-used. I mean, and typically the fire department protest on it because it slows, it can damage their equipment. And because it's a major route, that would be a tricky one probably to put speed bumps on it. I'm happy to look into it. And otherwise, you know, we'd try to kind of narrow the visual scape of the street with trees. As you said, those trees are getting hit. Anyway, I'm happy to continue to work through the different options. The first time I've heard the concern and happy to sit down with you and other residents and also pick Public Works' brain on what we could do there.
We do have a few more questions online, supervisor.
Yeah, okay, well, let's, oh, look at some options for what we can do specifically for Seventh.
Question, there are, there are quite a few streets in Live Oak that are being used as alternate routes. I live on Mossiel and there's days when you can, every five minutes, you see somebody going forty to fifty miles per hour. You go on Waze and when Forty First is back up, there it is right there, Dick Mossiel. I was very happy when we built our sidewalk that we had so many people on Waze pissed at us because they could no longer use that. There was quite a few comments. So this problem of people using alternative routes in Live Oak when Seven and Seventeenth and Shannon Claire and Forty First are back up. And Gross Road, I mean, it's a significant issue. We discussed speed bumps with Public Works. They thought it was a good idea and we'd have to pay for them.
Well, half of them.
Pardon? Oh, okay. Well, then let's don't waste money on that. But, you know, somewhere, you know, like she was saying, it would be better to not really work hard on this after someone is injured or killed. There are several routes in the Live Oak area that get used that way. So maybe, you know, and then we have Kaiser coming in, which is very frightening. Though we don't not see. Okay, well, I'm concerned about, you know, about, I'm concerned about all that traffic. We've got, I think, two developments coming in our area that will have eighteen to twenty-two units. That's so it'd be nice to get ahead of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to work with you on any specific suggestions. I don't think that, you know, Waze and the other route finding companies are not really helpful as far as turning those things off. So really, where it comes down to trying to look at physical changes to the street. You know, whether it's, yep, or we could, yep, exactly, yep. Yep. Yeah. You're talking about over in the city there?
I just moved here from Berkeley last fall. So Berkeley is very, you, you don't want to go on off-streets because you always, you end up going and then you turn, it goes into a one-way. So they've redesigned all of the streets so that it is, it is antithetical to your purpose, not to take the main road. I mean, and it's really worth studying.
All right. Absolutely, yeah.
You investigate. And I, I, I don't know if it's just, all, all of us are just so bogged down with so much. But at some point, like everyone I've talked to, it's like the Seventh Avenue in Bromer, this, that little corridor right there has become a cut-through. But it's, like you said, their, their Los Gatos closes Santa Cruz Avenue now, so people can't use that as a route. So in the summer, maybe there's alternate, there's alternate, there's routes that can't be used in a certain way. So it's just things to be looking at.
Sure. Yeah. Well, I'm certainly, yeah, I certainly believe in looking at what other cities have done, and we're not the first ones to experience these problems. And yeah, we'll look at the Berkeley toolkit for side streets like Mossiel. Okay, I think we got a few more questions online. Jamie?
Michael, if you're ready.
Hold on a second. I gotta turn our volume, your volume up here.
Michael, Posano, if you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, will the R T C be applying for any Secretary Buttigieg reconnecting communities program grant funding? And there's several other grants available for the trail. Are they, does R T C have plans to do that? Or are they gonna wait and apply at a much later date?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we will. It hasn't come up in discussions at the commission yet, but, you know, our staff is constantly looking for any and all grant opportunities. So I'm sure we'll apply for the connecting communities grants. I don't, yeah, I, I'll mention it to staff as well to make sure we start preparing now.
And Jean and Michael, you had your hand raised. I'm not sure if you just wanted to clarify, Michael, on that point about the, the green waste compost bins. I know you mentioned that, I think, multifamily residents did have small bins. Jean, did you want to clarify?
There you go. Okay. No, that's, I, I put that in the chat and I meant, I didn't, I had my hand up for another reason, and now I can't remember why it was. But that is, that clarification, did that, the woman who had the question, did she get that? Because I think that you can get, green waste does give little tiny buckets to, to store your food scraps in, in your kitchen. But those little tiny buckets are not picked up by a green waste truck the way they are in the city of Santa Cruz. You take that little tiny bucket of food scraps out to the green bin and you dump it in your green bin or your neighbor's green bin or somebody's green bin on the block. And that's how it's, it's collected. So I wasn't sure if the, the woman who had asked about that had seen the clarification in the chat, that's all.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we had Alex Vartan, and then Tim, you're after Alex.
Hi, Manu. Thanks for the very informative meeting. A couple of comments. Well, one, first, one quick question. When is the East Cliff resurfacing going to happen? And I think you said, is it going all the way up to twenty-six? So yeah, when, when is that going to happen?
It's, we don't have a specific date from the contractor when they would start, but after Labor Day is all I know right now. And yeah, because they're replacing the sewer main that has to get over to Load Street, I believe it will be all the way up to twenty-sixth, which is good news, because then, of course, that means we do get a totally resurfaced East Cliff Portola.
That, yeah, that's great. Is D P W the agency in charge if we want to reach out?
Actually, the sanitation district is leading it.
Okay.
Because, because it's led by the sewer main replacement.
Okay, that's what I thought. Well, maybe I'll reach out to you directly about, you know, I was disappointed we didn't get some of the well, we'll just, I think it'd be great if we, if we could get some of the lane narrowing on that stretch of Portola, because that's a really effective way of slowing things down. And the bike lanes are, are pretty narrow on that speedy part. So maybe we can work, work on reaching out to the sanitation district on, on that as to seeing what they can do. The other comment I have is, as you know, I've been listening to paying close attention to the Planning Commission study sessions. I think there have been four of them on the sustainability update. That is, for people who don't know, that is part of their regular meeting. But they have dedicated a large portion of their regular meetings over the past two months to studying the sustainability update with planning in the room in advance of their next two meetings. I, I've been pretty disappointed in the planning commissioners. Frankly, not our district. Our district's planning commissioner has really been on the ball. But some of them, even at the fourth meeting study session that was yesterday, had not even read the general plan, the sustainability update. They, they were still kind of asking questions that demonstrated they hadn't actually looked at the entire drafts. And with such a huge project, I think, you know, I've got a number of issues, but I'll just highlight one because I, I think, you know, it's important, and I haven't heard it at the Planning Commission, from the planning commissioners. Because this is such a large project that started so long ago, a lot of their work was informed by discussions that may not, you know, be as relevant in two thousand twenty-two. So I would just advocate that until we, you know, or as we move forward in these, these hearings, et cetera, I think we need to get architects and engineers and developers and general contractors to take a real closer look at the drafts and the feasibility and the design guidelines. Because from what I've heard from planning, those, you know, consultations they've had with the original, you know, group of informed experts were, you know, six, seven years ago at this point. So I just want to just state that the Planning Commission, I don't think has, has kind of dropped the ball a little bit. And their discussions to date have been a little here and there in these study sessions, not really getting into the meat, some of the issues. And yeah, anyway, it'd just be great if you could get, you know, a more recent cohort of experts to take a look at these things before, before we get to finality. So that's all. Thank you.
Great suggestion. Yeah, I'll work with, our planning commissioner, of course, works in building industry. And so bring, get some more peers together to review the, what we, what we're working with now with the sustainability update. Thank you.
Thanks.
And our final question online comes from Tim. Tim, you can unmute.
There we go. Can you hear now?
We can hear you, Tim.
Good. Just, I'd like an update on the homeless at Bromer Street on each side of the gulch. I still notice that there's some activity going on. And I also hear some pounding, which might be some form of building down in there. Can you give an update on what's going on there?
Lieutenant Baldridge? We have the former head of the Live Oak Community Center and now the head of our community policing division with the sheriff's office here, Lieutenant Baldridge. He'll share an update.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. We are aware of that. Our patrol deputies are actually frequenting that area. They've taken a number of individuals out of that area. I'll meet with our community policing sergeant that's in the area, and we'll, we'll do another walkthrough and make sure that that's going on. We recently obtained trespass letters for all the properties in that area, so we're able to enforce trespassing. So it is a continued problem that we have. And we're working on getting it all cleaned up, so we can hopefully work through that.
Okay. Well, our big concern too, as you're well aware of, fire danger. Because whenever I see them, they're usually smoking. So hopefully, you can get it under better control. We'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Supervisor, that's it for our online questions at this point.
Dropped off there. But I was saying, one of the challenges with, with Bromer is that the south half of the road is private property. And so they're ultimately have to pay to do the cleanup, which could be, you know, in the tens of thousands of dollars. We have, the county has paid to do the cleanup on the north half on our property. But we're, we're working with the property owner to encourage them to, to take care of their own property. And if that's it, then I'll bring the meeting to a close. I'll hang out here for another few minutes and happy to answer any other questions offline. Thank you, Jamie, and our online audience. Good night.